Item number six is a motion to direct the town manager to research expanded hours and programming at the community center.
So move.
Discussion, this item comes from Jill Waller. Jill?
Thanks, Matt. So I'm putting this on tonight about the community center, and I know that Matt is still working on an RFP for the current existing library. So with having that in mind, just starting back to when we first started having discussions way back when about the library, the major reason why we needed to make improvements for ADA as well as we had to outgrow our child area, we need to make improvements in larger child area and restrooms. So having that in mind, I know that Matt is going to have an RFP out for that at the next meeting, taking a look at what we currently have, making use of our existing buildings, not looking to actually duplicate efforts. I took a look at our community center, and actually, it wasn't the first time we did this. The community center was first explored back in April of 2018 by the former town council president with a great suggestion to have the recreation committee take a look at the community center. I believe there were several individuals who were senior community who had requested to have additional program at the community center. So they came to the rec board, the rec board did go on April 9th to go tour the community center, and after that motions were set forward, and eventually in September of last year, September 17th to be exact, the council voted to approve an RFP, approve a proposal for Frank Kapowitz, the local architect, to take a look at roofing, siding, windows, new front entranceway, as well as a little, new meeting rooms upstairs, little dachshund room, and air conditioning. So we already had approved that. The estimate that Frank is giving us is about $400,000 or so. I know we have some renderings to put up tonight, too. This is what Frank Kapowitz is saying that our new community center, and again, this was already approved by the council last year, would look at the library. A lot of people are not familiar with the community center. It's right near the schools, it's right behind Sprite Park. It's a building that currently is operating during the week, 8:30 to 4:00 during the week, Steve. Karen Flynn, our director there, if you haven't had a chance to meet her, please do. She is an incredible person and does great programming there. But the problem she's running into a little bit is the activities are well attended, but they could have more activities. And that's really what was trying to address by our former town council president that last term is that how can we better utilize this building? We have some photos too, Dan, if you want to just put some photos through. Because during the day, there are many activities that take place. The building itself, which I was describing, has been out there and has taken a look at it. It's in excellent condition. Unfortunately, last year, there was a sewage issue that came in and seeped into the lower level, but the positive part of that is that we were actually able to go and make some improvements into the lower level. So it is, you have availability to go into the lower level for handicap accessibility. But the more exciting portion of this is upstairs, community room, Jim commonly calls it the bingo hall, a large room that has a divide that you go through. And from what I'm really about to take a look at is moving activities that we're currently using at the library that are very important activities, lectures, movies, those types of activities, over to the large room, which unfortunately, don't have a picture of it here, but I'm sure many of you have been in it for a meeting, and be able to house those activities there. And by doing so, we'll then have extra room at the library that we can take a look at doing what we meant to do at first, to increase the size of the children's capacity of the library. What I want to do is have our town manager, which is Shaw, take a look at increasing hours of operation. Currently, we're there only during the day, not at night, we're also not there on the weekend. One of the rooms that is not shown here is we do have an exercise room, so this would open up for free for any Narragansett residents the opportunity to use our exercise room. We have all these other rooms that you can use, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts currently do use, but by adding additional activities, we'll be able to have a community center, a true community center. We don't have the answer to what South Kingstown has for a guild. We can have exercise classes, we can have yoga, we can have mommy and me, daddy and me, whatever we need to have at this site. It's in great shape. $400,000 is going to make it even better shape, so we'll be able to have community activities here. One thing that I'd love to take a look at, I did speak to Dr. Cummings about this last, about a year ago, I know that Rick spoke with him recently about it, potentially having before-school programs at the community center for the local families, be able to have some place for the children to go before school, as yet another reason why we can attract young families to the town in Narragansett. So we have this building, it's being underutilized because it's not being opened on the weeknights and on the weekends. So what I'd like to be able to have Shaw take a look at is, number one, what could those hours be, operation? Number two, what are the services that we need? We might find out, under having Steve Wright and the Parks Rec Department taking a look at this project, we might find out two years from now that we've outgrown this building, that we need to have a senior center built, dedicated solely for that. Well, the good news is that we own land all around this area, so we can be able to build what we need. But right now, we're getting into budget season, we're taking a look at what we have and what we don't have to be able to duplicate. Services are currently at the library room over here, so then we can then take that rooms, that would then be vacant rooms, and dedicate them to the children. Again, that was what the initial fleet for the library was, seems to be a good solution for us.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the other council members?
You go ahead.
Yeah, just, number three, and one, two, three, we're probably going to need additional staff to span out here.
Sure, but traditionally, when community centers and Parks Rec use them, we have part-time people that come in, so it's not salaried people. Patrick, thank you for bringing that up, we're not talking about bringing in salaried people or pensions. In traditional community centers and after-school programs and the such, they do typically have a very low price tag attached to it, so people customly will pay for a fee to attend a class. So if you want to take a yoga class, you'll pay a very nominal fee, which would then go back to the instructors. We're not looking to make money on this, but what we're looking to do is to be able to have different types of activities that the town currently does not offer to the residents at night and on weekends, when the majority of people would be using them.
Okay, so we're not duplicating programs, you're taking, you're basically gelling the library, you're taking the programs there and bringing them to the community center?
Well, if you're looking at, just talking about the movies and the lecture series, right, if we remove those to the community center, that would free up the rooms then that are currently being used, when they're not being used for a movie or a community center, they're closed up, correct? So this would then allow that, those two room spaces to be dedicated to an increased area for the children's library. I know that we're talking about children's or family on bathroom, that could be there. You know, so I know that, again, Matt is looking at an RFP for the next meeting, and I know that will be included in it.
Anyone else?
Sure.
Mr. Pugh.
So, from the summary of this motion, many popular functions have upraised the existing library, can be moved to the community center, but there's plenty of parking and room for, to accommodate movies, lectures, yoga, and other events. It's like, I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone right now. It's unbelievable, this is, this is just, it's ludicrous. In 2016, we had a ballot question in 2016, acquire real estate to be used for a new library. It passed 67 percent. We could debate the Belmont Building, we've been debating it, we're still building a new library. That's what was voted on, that is what eventually will happen. What you're attempting to do right now is to dismantle our library, take programs from it and move it to a community center unilaterally. This group right here is going to dictate the programming for a facility, a department in town. It's almost like the GM of a sports team calling the plays during a game instead of the coach. It's not our job. The board, the library board, and the director, and the staff, they dictate the programs at a library. The town council does not. In fact, if you look at the charter, the town charter, there's a library section. So section 42 in the charter, powers and duties. The Board of Trustees shall take possession of the library and shall therefore be the legal guardians or custodians of the library. They shall provide suitable rooms for the library, arrange for the proper care of the rooms, choose one or more competent persons as librarians, and fix their compensation and make all needful rules and regulations for the government of the library. So, we, you know, I could talk about the last election, the new library that's going to be built, but what it really comes down to, we technically don't even have the authority to move programs from the library. That's the board, that's the board, that's the Board of Trustees. It's in the charter. The town council cannot meddle in those operations, which, I mean, I'm reading the summary right here, and you're seeing directly here that these are library programs that you want to move. So I'd actually like to ask this listener, Mark Davis, about this, your reading of the charter, is this even, I'm going to say that this is not under our authority to do, and I would like you to confirm that.
I wasn't quite prepared for that question. I am familiar with the charter section dealing with libraries, and it is true, I can't recite it verbatim.
I have it here, I have it printed out.
But I do know it's, they have a great amount of autonomy with regard to that. As far as picking certain activities or functions, I don't know that it would be exclusive, I mean, we'd have to look into that, but for example, it's, I think I heard you say yoga. I don't think yoga would be a typical activity for, for a library to have exclusive venue or jurisdiction of. So if the town wanted to offer a yoga class, I could see the town being able to offer a yoga class, as they do on the beach, for example. You know, typical library functions, whatever that is, after having that long discussion a couple of weeks ago, I leave that for others to debate, would be, I think, worthy of a discussion. But I don't think you could say to the other members of the town council that, you know, because a library holds or hosts an activity such as yoga, the town's prevented from offering yoga seminars.
Correct, but nothing that the town council does with a vote here would have any bearing over which programs are offered at the library.
I believe that's true.
Correct, right? So the idea that we're going to move the movies from the library, you know, without even talking to the board, and just have them in the community center, it's going to be library functions, that's invalid.
I wouldn't, one thing is, I wouldn't say it's invalid, especially the motion is to direct, I mean, it's a motion to direct to research expanded hours and programming, it's going to come back to us.
Well, let's change the wording then. It shouldn't have, it should have nothing to do with the library.
It doesn't say anything. It's a motion to direct the town manager to research expanded hours and programming to the community center.
What's the summary? Why don't we write a summary, we're just going to ignore it?
You don't amend summaries, Jesse.
Well, it's new, it's just when you're in town last night to sell the building.
And we, I spent time writing my summaries and put them up, but the motion is the motion. If you have a reason for putting a motion, you could have a totally different reason for voting for that person's motion. I voted for motions before that I didn't agree with the summary on, but I.
All right, yeah, you guys are going to vote, you know, obviously, you three are going to vote for it. You're going to try to move the programs away from the library.
Well, the big part that you're missing, Jesse, is the information that I said about the RFP, correct? That Matt is working on one that will be able to make improvements to libraries. So with what I had said, is that those two, excuse me, Jesse, I'm speaking, the two rooms that we're talking about moving over, the lecture room and the movie rooms, that we could make those, that space into a larger children's area, which was what the initial goal was, is we had outgrown that. So that's what I'm saying, is that, it's too bad we didn't have both on the same night, but we couldn't, because Matt wanted to make some changes to his RFP. But if we're going to be changing the existing site, because you're right, we did vote to be able to put the Belmont Building up for sale, so if we're going to be changing the existing site and making improvements that are vastly needed in that existing site, I agree that we need to have a better library, specifically, what we hear all is that it's a children's library, then by taking those rooms, we can accomplish that by doing, that's what we wanted to do, right, have a children's library, have a children's restroom, or a family restroom, whatever the verbiage is. So we could do it in that space, and we could do it quite well. What we would need to do with the town, because, you know, we only have so much money to use in this town, and we need to be able to have our town residents have the best resources we can afford, so we can take those services and move them over to the community center.
Jill, this is, I mean, this is ridiculous.
It's ridiculous.
We've had some, we've had some, maybe three people.
It's kind of sad to make a conclusive restatement that something's ridiculous and just get a pause. Hey, what's your opinion, would you like to speak, or do you have me to go to the public? Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Yes.
My name is Patty Arkwright, I'm the library director here in Narragansett. I have to speak to this agenda item. First, I want to say that I think you needed to come to me or the board to ask about the use of the rooms. If you eliminate the program room, there will be no story time, there will be no children's programs, because that's the only room we have to use. The quiet study, which we have to close when we do have big programs, again, we cannot just close those rooms to make it a library for children. The other thing I wanted to do before I heard that it was so much related to the library in your summary, maybe not the motion, but the American Library Association, which is a group that supports public libraries and other types, but we have a bill of rights that we follow as we develop policies, as we provide services, and this is the library initiation, initiated programs, part of the library bill of rights. Library initiated programs support mission of the library by providing users with additional opportunities for information, education, and recreation. Libraries initiated programs should not be prescribed or removed or canceled because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval of the contents of the program or the views expressed by the participants, as stated in another part of the library bill of rights, article two. Library sponsorship of a program does not constitute an endorsement of the content of the program or the views expressed by participants, any more than the purchased material for library collection constitutes an endorsement of the contents of the material or the views of its creator. Library initiated programs are a library resource, and as such, are developed in accordance with written guidelines as approved and adopted by the library's policymaking body. These guidelines should include an endorsement of the library bill of rights and set forth the library's commitment to free and open access to information and ideas for all users, no matter what age.
Thank you.
Carleen Towne, 240 Woodhill Room. When I saw this motion on the agenda, I was pleased that Meg Rogers posted Ms. Lawler's full summary on the forum page. Yes, the community center is underutilized, and for a lot of reasons. Either one, I was thought of it as a Narragansett senior center, not the community center. Even its newsletter focuses more on seniors than anything else. Its mission statement is to promote the health and well-being of our aging population through programs and services. The last time I was in that building was years ago, when my district voted there. I didn't want to base my opinion of it on that experience, so I went there today, so to see if I could figure out why it is underutilized. I was there around 3:30 this afternoon, and I was the only person there, except for a staff member in the office. She was very nice and told me I could look around, and she gave me a copy of the newsletter. The building is open until 5:00 PM, but I'm pretty sure I was the last person to visit for the day. From there, I went to the library. It was packed with people of all ages. There were children in the children's room, there were people in the program room, there were people reading newspapers in comfy chairs, there were students at tables, there were people in the stacks, there were people everywhere, probably because we all know that the library is geared to the needs of all ages, not just seniors. Who would pay for the recommendations Ms. Lawler made in her summary? Obviously, the town would have to hire more employees. And why more employees to staff an empty building? Why would they get, I know you said they wouldn't be part of the pension system, they'd just be part-timers. I don't know how you can work that, but everything Ms. Lawler suggests would have to come from taxpayers' money. There would be no state reimbursement from OLS, as there would be for a modern library. There are patrons waiting in the wings to donate money for a state-of-the-art library here in Narragansett, as presented to you by Mr. Barry, the fundraiser. Do you honestly believe there would be patrons willing to donate to the community senior center? Does the community center have an organization like the Friends, who do extensive fundraising to pay for many of the programs offered at the library for free? Or will the taxpayers pick up that burden as well? Does Ms. Lawler realize the cost of doing renovations, like installing children's bathrooms for her pie-in-the-sky preschool programs, not to mention hiring certified personnel to run them? Preschool programs belong in the schools, not in the senior center. I will not even bring up the arguments others have made or access to the building during school opening and closing times. We all know what a fiasco that is. It is time for Ms. Lawler to be realistic and to move forward with a library that is in the best interest of the people of Narragansett, not to waste taxpayers' money on a building that is underutilized for a thousand reasons.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kevin Ryan, Roxbury Avenue. To the opposition to the Belmont Library going ahead is basically financial. People are thinking it's just too much money for the town, even though the people did approve a referendum, and they knew exactly where the money was going when they approved at 67 percent, approving the bar and so forth. Now, if it's a question of saving money, why would you then turn around and spend $400,000 at least to renovate the community center? It makes no sense. That's a lot of money, and it could be more than that. The second thing to increase is in employee costs. There has to be someone in that building at all times, if it's going to be open evenings and weekends, that money adds up. Could be a hundred grand a year or more, just to keep somebody in the building for safety reasons and the like. And third, increased costs at the present, at the present library, say spending a lot of money, a lot of money, to save money, it just doesn't make any sense. Thank you. The present library, say spending a lot of money, a lot of money, to save money, it just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Just for a quick second, 8 o'clock, we have our, just, we have one item that is for the scheduling of a public hearing, so, but it's not a hearing itself, so we're going to have a motion to schedule a public hearing to consider rezoning six properties to comply with designations assigned in the 2017 Narragansett Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map.
So move.
All right, so discussion, the earliest this could be done would be April 1st, is that a date that would work for everyone? Would someone like to do it later today? Everyone, April 1st. I have a motion to approve this for April 1st at 8:00 PM. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion approved, 5 to 0. Okay. So back to item number six. Is there anyone else? Yes, Ms. Shields.
Jill Shields, Girls Court. I would like to ask Ms. Lawler, Mr. Mannix, Mr. Lima, what courses you've taken in library science? What books have you read about libraries and their functions? What workshops have you been to? What lectures have you been to? Then you can save yourself up as experts of what a library in the 20th, 21st century really is. You have to leave those decisions to the people who know what they're talking about. It's ludicrous to think that you can come into this and decide what should be done to our library when you have no background and when the people who are making these decisions have done years of work. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan, remember Rosemary?
Stan Chowsky, Narragansett. Oh, thank you, Ms. Law. I think this, you're going to look back and see all of the facilities, all of them, and try to utilize them all, and this is the first step. You know, maybe Sunset Farm's another place we could do some yoga, I don't know. You know, there's plenty, maybe we just can, maybe change the wording and say that would be a library accessory space. So the library can have an accessory space, the community center can have an accessory space over there at Sunset Farm, it can have other spaces in other buildings run by the library, so it's still in the library curfew. And therefore, it's not against the library, it's actually giving the library more space to do the loud things that they have to do, the noisy movies, whatever. And it makes it easier for them to do that, they can keep the quiet space there, and you can have the loud, especially old people, you don't have to, you have to speak very loudly, old people, as well as some kids do. So now we have loud space there, loud space here, movies here, activities there, we can have boxing going on with some of the kids, we can have anything. The library can't be in charge of that, and they can use their accessory building to do that, therefore, we can minimize. I had a article from Jane Towne paper, they're in the same situation in the library, and they made a choice of adding on three separate additions to the existing building. So they got 600 foot, square foot accessory spaces to their existing library for $2 million, and they feel they'll have a children's room, an old person's room, they'll have these different rooms for the activities, and keep it away from the noisy, from the quiet space. But I'm saying, the accessory building would even be better, it'd keep the noise away from the library. So continue to look at that. I'm not saying I have the idea and I have the solution, but we should look at accessory spaces available to the library for their use in other buildings or facilities in the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rosemary Smith, and I live at 24th Ward Castle Road, and I wanted to speak to the issue tonight of community space in the library. So David Smith and I are facilitators for a winter speaker series that has taken place for eight years at the library, and we bring a speaker in on the last Sunday of January, February, and March. They have been incredibly well-attended. For example, the one that's coming up this Sunday, with all seats were registered by last week, so 95 seats have already been taken, and there's a short waiting list behind it. So when we were looking to bring this speaker series, and it's a collaboration between the South County Museum, the Friends of Canache Farm, and the Narrow River Reservation Association, we looked around the town to find a facility that would be willing to accept us and would have the technological capability, because it's usually a PowerPoint presentation that goes with that. And so, eight years ago, we made the decision to come to the library because it had the space, it had the technology, it had a person in the name of Marilyn Sherman, who is incredibly adept at bringing people in and making them feel at home, and operating the technology that goes along with these presentations. That was one of the reasons. The other reason was a movement that was in existence eight or nine years ago, is where is the town? Remember those days, when we talked about how we can bring people downtown? And this has proved to be an unbelievably, you know, successful program, these particular speaker series that I'm talking about, because we have brought people to the town. On Sunday afternoons, when the other facilities were not open, when there was someone who was present who could help us out, in the restaurants around us, in the coffee shops. was present who could help us out, and the restaurants around us, and the coffee shops around us appreciate what we do because we bring business to those places. I think the community center, it is looking so much better now than it did eight years ago. But to come to where the library is right now, just technologically, would cost a large amount of money for the community center. I would encourage you to do both. I want the community center to be successful. It's a building, it's there, all the recreation areas, it's going to be the terminus of the bike path within the next year. It has lots of possibilities, but I don't think it should replace the wonderful facility that we have out within the common room at the library, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Dr. Albert Allof, 24 Eagles, has terrorist near against Rhode Island. One of the things I have learned over the years, even though I have my doctorate, working at Rhode Island State Training School with boys and girls for 10 years and working over 20 years with the Department of Corrections, we all have our areas of expertise. I have students in my class who draw beautiful pictures. Some of them look like they could qualify to go to Rhode Island School to do doc design. We all have our areas of expertise. This lady who just spoke, I could not compete with her and got to library science several of them because I realize I'm ignorant of those facts. But one of the things I've been taught over the years is to always respect those experts. And Ms. Law, I do applaud you in trying to make a recreational center. I'm all into working out, state, I think that's very, very important, and making that like the South County Guild, you know, that would, that would be a beautiful thing because I think working out over time is going to help us all live a lot longer, and it's going to lower our medical costs down the road. So as the lady just spoke, I'm all into improving that if we have the monies, but I don't feel that that building should replace any of the services of a library. And some people are always saying, well, you know, uh, this building, it's going to be added on. There's something called economies of scale. When we have everything compartmentalized, we can avoid duplication of services. That's something we have to consider. If we have some library staff working in this area of the building, they can easily be transferred to this area of the building. Plus, when you go to the Kennedy Space Center, you go to museums, they have multiple facets where students are learning, they're watching, they go to a movie camp together. So you can, having everything together, it means just so much more user-friendly. Thank you very much.
Alan Corneau, 109 Miss Mall Street. I have in my hand the timeline that the Board of Trustees has done since 2008. During that time, we have done a feasibility study, we have worked with a library consultant who has done a needs assessment, we have worked and spoken with architects, and we have worked with a cost estimator. And what I also have here is the minutes from a meeting from March 2nd, 2015, when we first started working with the town council on this issue. And you, Matt Mannix, was the president, and we looked at numerous sites, including by the senior center. We were then told to look at four specific sites, which we did, and then we presented to the public on September 28th, 2015, four sites. It was, at that time, under Matt Mannix, the town council told us to do a bond to for 2016. And we, all this time, have worked under the town council and have done what you have directed us to do. And the town responded, they responded with a big yes to that Belmont Building. And for whatever reason, you continually upstate that building, it is clear that people want that to be the center of the town. And now, have you worked with those people? Have you worked with architects? Have you worked with library consultants? We have. And I don't understand why you continue to procrastinate this project. We continually have reached out to you that we will answer your questions, and we have done what you've asked us to do. But you, Matt Mannix, Ms. Lawler, and Ricky Lima, you have not approached me at all in any question in regards to this, as well as there are people in the public who continually speak out against this project, and they are welcome to come to us at any time. I have spoken to this in the past, but I think it is clear that we did our research for this, that a site for the library as directed under you from 2015 is the Belmont Building. I don't know why you continue to procrastinate on that. If you, again, if you have any questions, you are welcome. I have 15 minutes.
No, I know, I sounded like you were writing up, but... I went, if you recall, in early 2017, when I started to have concerns about the deal, I went, I did reach out to the Library Board of Trustees at the information session, there were about 40 people there, and you may recall that was, it was not a, it was not a give-and-take conversation. It was do this no matter what at any cost was the message that I was sending. So I'm going to, some of the things that, so that's, I don't want to get into give-and-take, but I've got to correct some of the real inaccuracies on this. It's okay to disagree, but I think there's been some things out there that have been untrue, and I'm going to start to call out the things that are lies.
Okay, and I think what I want to point out as well, I want to point out right now to you, that in 20, January 14th of 2019, you called a work session, which we're all present. These are the notes that I have prepared in advance. And you know what, man? They were all covered. I asked a few questions, but these topics were covered. But you know what? You didn't ask a single question. You keep saying that you have questions, that you have been covered, but we had a person from the state, you didn't ask for one question.
Thank you.
I have two questions immediately that come to my mind on this motion. One is, and I appreciate your comment, Matt Mannix. Who came up with the cost estimate of $400,000? And how does it break down between investment in the building and additional salaries for people, for additional people? That's one question that I think you need answered tonight. The second concern I have is that I do not believe, and I'm, I'm speaking for some library employees, I do not believe that one of them would ever go from the library building that now exists over to the senior center to pick up anything. They would just simply not be interested in doing that. So it's up to you, the staff, anything that you do there on your own. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the council?
Yes, man, I'd like to speak on this. So I sat on the Rec Advisory Board, and we were directed to go over to the community center and have a meeting, look at the facility, and see what programs we could come up with to expand that center. I'm not going to mention any names who brought the meeting to a head, but that's what we were told to do. And we had a meeting, we had a very successful meeting. There are people in this audience that actually sat in at that meeting, including myself. So what we're going to do is we're going to look into expanding some of the community center, see if it's affordable for what we're looking at, because some seniors have asked for this. This wasn't something that somebody up here dreamt up overnight last week or the month before. This was back in April 2018. That's when it was brought up. Check the rec, you'll find that that's where it was. Okay? So that's what we're going to do. That's what this motion is about. If it doesn't pan out, then maybe it won't happen. But right now, this is what we're looking into.
Okay. Watch the breakdown.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the council? All in favor?
I've got some business. You've got a comment?
Winn, go ahead.
Winn Hames, 31, um, I was at the same meeting that you were talking about for the Rec Board, because I was on the Rec Advisory Board, too. All the discussions we had, there was not one mention of moving any program from the library to the community center. None. I would add stuff on this motion.
What's on, what's on the motion?
It's not.
What's on the motion is what's recommendations, what is up at the top. So that's what I'm going by. Okay? That's what is out there. So that's what we're going to do. I just explained it, but it seems that you didn't get it. Want me to do it again? Ready to?
Yeah.
The town council directs the town manager to research expanded hours and programming at the community center. That, our meeting was about expanding programs, wasn't it?
Our meeting was about expanding programming, but more directed towards the school.
Expanding programs.
Not toward the library.
You can define it any way you want. Expanding programs. That's what we're going to do.
Everybody knows.
All right, it's not a back and forth here, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed. All in favor? All right, all opposed.
No.
Motion approved, three to two.
Yeah, I'd like to move 22 to 26 up, Matt, if you're ready.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number 22. Is a motion to receive and make a determination on the validity of a voter initiative to continue renovations of the Belmont Building to become the Narragansett Town Library? I need a motion.
I need a motion. Sorry.
Second. Winn, just before you, I'm just going to go over the procedure and then I think to hear from you. All right, so this voter initiative process obviously is, well, I don't know if it's obvious, but this is something, is a, is a unique characteristic of our charter. Many cities and towns have it, many states have it, and the basic process is that an applicant files a petition with the town for voter initiative. In this case, the, the petitioner was Mr. Hames. The town clerk then marks that, filed, town clerk immediately forwards that petition to the town solicitor. The town solicitor has to submit a written opinion regarding the legality of the petition to the town council within 14 days of his receipt of it being marked filed. Then, at the next town council meeting, which is where we are at in the process right now, the council determines the validity of the petition, so that's the motion that's in front of us. And what this does is it allows the voters to directly put an item onto essentially the docket of the town regarding rules, regulations, ordinances, ordinances and laws. I just, before you speak, Mr. Hames, I just want to make sure that from the solicitor perspective that I characterized it correctly.
Uh, the process was, we cited properly.
Okay, so then, now we're at the, we have these four items, 22, 23, 24, and 25. Those items all had initiatives, there were four that you had put forward, and we will vote on them separately, but discussion-wise, I think I'll go to Mr. Hames to see what he has to say about them, and then go to the solicitor to have him share his opinion, which we have him writing, and I don't know if everyone has. So go ahead.
All right. I did file these four petitions. The council solicitor has some objections as to the process of the wording, so I'd like to withdraw petition for 22, 24, and 25.
Okay, thank you. So right now, they're in front of us, so they can't really be withdrawn, per se. We'd have to, we still have to vote. The last, the next step in the process is, if you see in the motion, we have to either mark it as accepted, and then it goes forward to the process of collecting signatures to put it on a ballot, or it's marked invalid if it's not, if, if it doesn't comport with the charter. So that's what this discussion is. So you're indicating to us that three of the four, you're no longer really interested in.
Three of the four, I talked to the town clerk today to withdraw it, said, and she said, I could probably come here and withdraw it. I also talked to an attorney, and he said the same thing. So withdrawing these three because of his objections, I have reworded them and resubmitted them to the town clerk, and I do believe the town solicitor has a copy of the new ones, which are worded to more what he is looking for, if I'm not mistaken.
It's just at this part of the process where you are, Winn, is that it's not, they've, they've, they've come to us, so they can't be withdrawn, they're put on the agenda, so...
They can be withdrawn.
But we can, but we can, no, I mean, we take that into consideration in the discussion, obviously. So with that being said, do you have nothing to add?
No.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to this one.
I don't know what his objections are, but...
Well, I want him to summarize those, so if you could talk about the four of these, even if the 22, 23, 24, 25, we'll take each separately.
Okay, well, I'm not going to read, um, Mr. Hames' petition in its, I'll summarize it. So the first one was submitted to the clerk and dated stamp January 18, 2019, and in the petition, Mr. Hames had expressed an interest in not to sell the Belmont Building, in the continuing renovations of the Belmont Building. I have submitted a written opinion as required to do, and I found the petition to be invalid because the petition actually predated the date the council voted to sell the building. So the petition was dated the 18th, the town council voted to sell the building thereafter, so I found it to be invalid because it was filed on time. The next one on the agenda is the voter initiative entitled Recall, also submitted by Mr. Hames, date stamped January 23rd, 2019. This one, um, this one is, is a little bit trickier in the sense that I think the, the subject matter is proper. The subject, uh, subject matter is proper, but the form in which it is, is laid out and which it was submitted is lacking. And so, I really don't have, I don't have the wherewithal to say, you know, Mr. Hames, you should reword it. So I found it to be not legally valid because it really doesn't ask for anything, it makes a statement. And so, the petition says in part, "I hereby petition the Narragansett Town Council for the following: recall." It, it simply states recall, followed by procedures. It does not request that the town council take specific actions such as amending the town charter, or enacting a new ordinance, or a resolution, or a law. So I found it lacking in specificity, and I think that could be easily addressed, but as it's written, I found it to be invalid for those reasons. The next petition Mr. Hames submitted was to reverse the decision to sell the Belmont Building, date stamped January 23rd, 2019. I also found that to be invalid because, legally invalid, because the petition did not seek to enact, nor rescind a town law, regulation, ordinance, or resolution. Those are things that are spelled out specifically in the charter. So for those reasons, I found that to be invalid. And the last petition filed at that time, Mr. Hames, I just received them today, so I haven't read the new ones, to be completely frank. The, the last one that I had opined on was dated stamp 20, January 23rd, 2019, and that petition was to renovate the Belmont Building in part. And again, I found that to be legally invalid because it did not seek to enact, nor rescind, a town law, regulation, ordinance, or resolution as required in the charter. That's a summary of the, of the four that I received, the first being January 18, and the remaining three on January 27. and the remaining three on January twenty-second.
So the voter initiative process, basically, it allows an item to be put before the council, but it has to be a regulation, an ordinance, a law, or a resolution that is either being enacted or changed. So, for example, if somebody didn't like our height limits on houses, they could, that would be, that would be a perfect fit for this, and they said, we wanna change that to forty feet or to thirty feet, right now it's thirty-five feet. So, so with that in mind, and with the feedback from Mr. Hames regarding these, so item twenty-two is the one before us, so item twenty-two is, I'm going to, if everyone sees any discussion from the council on, we have to, we, we as a council have to, we get the advice from the solicitor, the steps in the process are, the clerk sends the solicitor, solicitor sends it to us. It's kind of important for us to follow the procedure here, because it's the first time in many people's memory they remember an initiative process, so again, the can't come from, clerk receives it, sends it to the solicitor, solicitor has fourteen days to provide us an opinion right now, and then we have to decide whether we're gonna mark it accepted or invalid. So I'll be looking for a motion on twenty-two to mark it one of those two things.
Move that motion.
I'll move the motion to make it invalid. Sorry.
Second, okay, so discussion on item twenty-two, and this was one that Mr. Hames said he also was not interested in pursuing anymore at this time, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-three is a motion to receive and make a determination on the validity of a voter initiative entitled Recall. So again, I'll be looking for a motion to accept this or deem it invalid.
I'll make the motion to call it invalid.
All right, this is, this is the one that lacks specificity, Mr. Hames.
Just to point out, what the town charter says, there's only several reasons that you can deny this, and that's if they violate state or federal laws. And that, according to the attorney, is the only reason that you can invalidate anything.
Or state, or federal statutes, or common law. It says that in the charter, not just in the constitution.
Okay.
Well, that's important, that's the important omission, Winn.
What, what, what state, common, federal law does this violate?
This, the, what we have here is that it was, it's not, it lacks specificity, is what the solicitor advised us.
I was gonna ask, which common, state, federal law does it violate?
I don't have that answer for you. The advisory opinion from him was that it lacks specificity.
You don't think it violates federal and state law?
I'm going on the advice of the solicitor on it lacking specificity, and that, and that it doesn't lay out the whole process, so... We're not, we're not getting in the whole thing on this, okay? He's, Mr. Hames is submitting new ones, so we, that replaced these. So, all right, any other discussion from the council?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mark, the three that were just dismissed or that were, you know, not valid because of specificity, is because they don't address certain ordinance, they don't address certain issues, is that correct?
The three, Patrick, excluding Recall, is true. They don't address a specific ordinance, regulation. And the recall, it's, it's important. It is somewhat confusing, and I'm not gonna suggest that this is the best drafted chapter I've ever read, but right in the beginning of chapter four, section one dash four dash one, the process, it's laid out, or the intent of the process was, and it was to permit voters to, oh, no, rated verbatim, "The process shall permit voters to enact and/or rescind town laws, regulations, ordinances, and resolutions."
We don't have any of these from these two.
Correct. And, and the recall, as I said, I think it could be revised and, and moved forward quite easily. There could be a request to enact it, you know, to amend the charter, to include that, or to adopt an ordinance. That's, that's much easier, I think, to address, and I think with, with some more forethought on how that recall process would work would be helpful. So I do think it's appropriate, I just don't think it was, it was properly submitted. On the others, it's really not addressing any of the things that's expressly set out in the, in the charter.
Yes, why?
I had submitted a new one to follow those guidelines as well, on the recall. But the recall was taken almost word for word from West Virginia, from their charter, so it's, I know it's a little bit confusing, but that's word for word from what they had in West Virginia.
Under our charter, though, we have to mark them either accepted or invalid. We don't have a remand. No, no, I'm not debating, I'm just saying, we don't have, you know, in, in, in legal circles, when there's an appeal or something, you can remand it, send it back to the applicant, but that's not an option here under the way the charter works. All right, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item number twenty-four, a motion to receive and make a determination on the validity of a voter initiative to reverse a vote to sell the Belmont Building. Again, I'll be looking for a motion to mark invalid or mark accepted.
Uh, to mark it invalid.
Is there a second? All right, discussion, so this, the basic thing is this one predated, this was the one that predated the actual vote?
I, I thought the first one we addressed was the one that predated, but I could be wrong.
Sell the building.
I thought number twenty-two, well, I think, I think Mr. Hames had submitted one that predated the motion, then resubmitted it, so I thought the first one about...
Okay, I'm sorry, I misspoke, then I'm gonna...
I could be wrong.
So, it, it, one predated, but all three don't address an ordinance, resolution, or...
Twenty-two was renovations. So renovations was received, you're correct, Matt. Renovations was received and date stamped January twenty-third, so it's the same explanation, but you're, you're correct, so that would have been the January eighteenth, and would have been on time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion approved five to zero. And item number twenty-five is a motion to receive and make a determination on the validity of a voter initiative to use bond funds to renovate the Belmont Building.
I'll make that motion, I just have a quick question. These are regular motions, just like all the others, right? So are these open to public comment?
Because they're withdrawn, he's asked if they're withdrawn, it seemed a little silly to go into a long discussion of them. Motion, but again, what's the motion? Is it a motion to, it made this mark, accepted or invalid?
Uh, motion to make it invalid.
Sorry.
Any discussion on that? Go ahead, go on with that. I mean, you understand?
Oh, I understand.
Do you get it?
I understand. What caused Star of Twenty-Third Second Street? It was just a minor issue that I, the solicitor mentioned, and then he read it properly, I believe. We said that the voter initiative is to put on the ballot, where Mr. Hames, you said the voter initiative is to come to the council. There's a big difference. A voter initiative that goes, gets passed, the ballot, goes to a vote, it doesn't come to the council. That's the whole idea of the voter initiative, is to have the voters, the majority, make law or determination, and I think it got, I think this, it got confused or misworded that the voter initiative doesn't come to the council.
It doesn't come, but, but, so the process, I'm gonna clarify the process. I'm gonna, the applicant files the petition with the town clerk, town clerk marks it filed, town clerk immediately forwards the petition to the town solicitor. Town solicitor submits its written opinion within fourteen days. At the next town council meeting, we then have to mark it invalid or accepted. If it's accepted, it goes out for collection of signatures for a hundred twenty days, and then it goes on to the next regular election ballot, which would be twenty-twenty, if those signatures are collected. I've left out a few steps about it, but we're, we're... So it does, so I didn't, I, I know the voter initiative doesn't come to the council because it's voter initiative.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you. Mr. Hames, your mission?
I'd like to stress the invalidity of this, and there's one, two reasons. One, is there a Belmont Building legally? Answer, no. We voted on the old IGA market or renovate the current library. There is, I have no problem with the old IGA market. I have a problem with the unconnected hair liquor store, and with the unconnected beautifully structured outward building, but internally useless second floor, which is not connected to the, to the store, and connected wobbly to the liquor store. We just gotta, when we discuss this, please remember there are three separate unconnected buildings. Now, if there ever was another reason to have a mediator, it's this meeting. We must mediate this problem. We don't wanna have the expense, very expensive RFP for one or two buildings. I don't wanna spend money for a special election, because I truly believe a mediator can change this situation. I think a mediator has a good chance to get this conflict peacefully resolved. And by the way, we can't afford to be out two-point-eight million, we can't afford three or four-hundred thousand for an architect or more. Please, let's get a mediator, we can solve this much nicer than this way.
All right, is there any further discussion from the council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-six is a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing a special election in accordance with all local, state, or island board of elections and federal election regulations to be scheduled on Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand nineteen. I need the motion.
I'll move that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item comes from Mr. Q and Mr. Murray.
Mr. Murray.
All right.
Okay, we talked about this two weeks ago. As you can see, this is the, what, ninety-seventh session of the Narragansett Town Council. In my little memory, I don't ever remember a voter initiative. Tonight, we have four of them. So to stop the confusion and the contention, Jesse and I propose that we have a special election, which the last one cost, little research, cost fifteen thousand dollars. I think that's short money to straighten out this mess that we find ourselves in on the library question. So basically, it's, we can get this done hopefully by May seventh, and be an up and down vote, and the basic question would be, should the town of Narragansett move a modern illusions library to the town-owned IGA slash Belmont Market space, renovate and update the same space with all previously approved monies, and rename it the Narragansett PFC Library? So it's an up and down vote, yes or no, it will end all this contention from the one side that voted for a bond, and they feel this is franchise, that we're almost here, the RFP didn't go out, we didn't follow through with the bond. And there's another side that felt that they voted for a bond for a library, but not in that particular space. So that's the confusion, that's the nuts of it, so I think it's something that can be resolved in a basic, all-American apple pie election. You're like a Disney movie from the seventies, for God's sake. Very straightforward, up and down vote, both sides can rally. And what are your thoughts, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen?
What does everyone think, counsel, then?
So I think at the last council, this was presented, we voted no for it, Patrick. Wasn't this presented in the last council?
No, no, this was, this is, I, we talked about it, I talked about it, but this is agenda item, this, this.
So it wasn't brought up at the last council?
It was brought up, we discussed it.
Well, what happened?
Well, I, I said I'm gonna bring it up the next meeting.
You said the last council, not less?
Last council.
Last council, yes.
It was never on the agenda at any past council.
It was never on the agenda. Oh, you mean, oh, you mean two years ago, when we had Jokel, oh, no, it was never on the agenda.
It was discussed, though.
It was discussed, but it was asked for a special, that was for the two thousand eighteen, this past election.
This past election, right. So if we put it on at this past election, wouldn't it cost the town anything?
Well, fifteen thousand dollars, we can continue to fight and battle for the next twenty months, and we can end it in two months.
Right.
So, I mean, you know...
Is that the plan, to battle for two years?
I mean, okay, you know, hey, listen, I'm...
I just wanted to clear, right?
Yeah, it is actually the plan.
Okay, I, I, okay, that's what I, that's important information to know.
I mean, you know, a lot of, a lot of voters out there on both sides feel disenfranchised on the library question. We have an opportunity in our charter to correct it. For a short fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, I think it will...
The fact that you think that, you know, that, that close election and having a three-vote block just overrules sixty-seven percent, and we're not gonna fight that, is pretty telling to me. The people voted for it, it doesn't just get ignored because you have three people in the council. So, I'm not... And I do have a question for you, and I think it's gonna maybe lend a little clarity to why the building went up for sale so quickly, but, you know, just for transparency, I'd like to ask you, have you or anyone you know spoken to any person or business at any time about purchasing the Belmont Building?
I have not, and as you know, we have this item, we would have an executive session on it, so I have not, so I...
Anyone you know?
I have not spoken to anybody, so on that, and that's why I put it on, because I knew that people would be probably coming to us.
All right, well, thank you for saying that on the record, appreciate it. So, for this item, so fifteen thousand dollars for this election, for the special election, we could have it at three polling stations, so we don't have to have the full, the full layout, we could have one central, one in the south end, one in the north end, we don't have to close any schools, could do it on a Tuesday. The funding for that would come out of the three hundred thousand dollar town contingency, so no effect on any programs, any projects, no taxes are raised, literally, it's, it's a negligible amount of money in the grand scheme, but it will affect nothing in any way. Every, I mean, expenses are a little reason, Ricky. We spent, the last town council approved twenty-six thousand dollars in a unanimous vote, no discussion, to paint this assembly room. I don't think anyone sitting here is, in my reading, who owns in here right now.
What about the twelve?
So twenty-six thousand, a missing, and then tonight, we have thirteen thousand for a new lawn mower, which I think is fine, but that's thirteen thousand dollars for a lawn mower. Yeah, so expense, I just don't really see how that is gonna factor into this. The only thing that I can see factoring in is you possibly understanding that it's probably not gonna go the way you want it to go, so you don't even have the election. But I think the important thing is to see what the people want. I respect the people that talk about the silent majority, I disagree, I don't think that is a majority, but I respect that opinion, and we don't know, we don't have the data to know that. But we can find that out, we can find it out definitively, we will pledge to follow the results of the election, and it basically solves the issue. results of the election, and it basically solves the issue. And then I want to bring up one other fact, I guess, from the last few months. So we had the neighborhood associations forum back in, I think it was late August or September of last year, there was a question on that forum survey. The question was, as you oversee the design construction of the town's largest economic project, the new library, what is your top objective? So this is a survey that went out to all candidates in the last election. There was, it was multiple, or not multiple choice, but there was four options. One was to ensure the new library is completed in the most cost-conscious manner. Number two was to ensure the new library is a first-class state-of-the-art facility. Number three, to continue to explore locations or options for the library. Number four, repeal the recent vote to purchase the Belmont property. So you basically have two options there that are, you're saying you do not want to do this project. So number three or four, you could just answer that way, and that clears it up. Me, Patrick, Susan Bonanno, Winn, all, actually Winn was different. Me, Patrick, and Susan said, complete this in the most cost-conscious manner. Winn said, first-class state-of-the-art facility. Jill didn't answer one of those four, but did comment and said, the deal has changed so significantly, it should go back to the taxpayers to vote on the new terms. Ricky didn't even object in any way. He answered the same way me and Patrick and Susan did, said, complete this project in the most cost-conscious manner. Complete the project. Not, not completed.
Right. I want the best library in this town that the taxpayers can afford. I said it, and I'll say it again, that's what I want.
Okay, so why didn't you answer number three? Explore locations and options for the library.
They had already made a decision, Jesse.
Oh, so you just answered?
No, Jesse, there was not a decision made, okay? This isn't an argument back and forth, exactly.
Okay, so then you just said what you thought people wanted to hear, got it.
So people put words in your mouth, so you're seeing the one-issue candidates right here. Everybody at home, these are your one-issue candidates. I want everyone to be very clear, they've dragged us through this for two months, it's a disgrace. It is a disgrace, it's a disgrace. And then we've got our mom, turn the, show the mom, show the angry mom, because this is what has to stop, right? So this is, this has happened before in the world of politics and municipal elections. There are people who run for office, and I'm not, I don't want to talk about these situations where there's a bond item, and then they get elected, and they may say, I would, I think this was a great idea to borrow $4 million for an athletic field, but then I came in and I saw what the finances of the town were, and you know what, I don't think we can borrow that amount. That's the job of the town council members, and that, we could have had a candidate in the election who had done that. Now, I said in the election that I think the deal should have been repealed, that's how I answered that question, and I was consistent in the campaign on that, that was, that was my point of view, and, but that was my deal. There's other views, people's views evolve, Patrick's view evolved on this issue, others have had evolution. I just explained how I went to the library to talk about when I was concerned about the terms of this Gilbain deal in the spring of 2017. And so, you know, I get a little bit irritated when people say, I haven't reached out, I haven't had the conversation, that wasn't really welcome, it wasn't, the conversation wasn't welcome. So, but the other point to this whole thing is, when we, when so many people have emailed and called about, there's a, we voted on this in 2016, that was a vote to authorize borrowing, it was not a mandate to spend, okay? And that's very important, and that's another misconception that needs to be cleared out. Again, I want everyone at home to understand that. In 2016, it was a motion to authorize borrowing, not a mandate to spend $5.8 billion. So thank you, is there any other comments?
Matt?
Yes.
Why did you vote for the bond in January? You didn't want to expand, or you didn't want to move to the?
I said, Belmont building was the Plan A, and I always said Plan B was the existing site. I said that pretty consistently, that, you can watch the tape.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
You were there.
I was there, and I'd like to clarify, I think, I think from day one, this whole library question, that you never wanted to do anything except just put lipstick on the library that we have now, do the minimum there, and that's it. I think this whole thing has been a farce from day one. You never wanted to expand the library, you never wanted any, any type of rehab that would meet this group's needs, because you have some kind of disdain for this library board. And I just don't understand, you campaigned on it, then you voted against it, and you said, well, if we got the land, then I'd have pried before for the Belmont, and then we did get the land, and you were still against it. So, I mean, I evolved because we've got a better deal. You seem to keep switching, crossing midstream to fit your narrative, and to get elected, and to fit what's best for you, not what's best for the community, not what's best for the library and their needs. I mean, they're as good as a department as any, and they have needs, and we're not to fill them in that kind of location. And the people voted for it, so we have another point at the apple on both sides. This is a simple up and down vote. We can end this question, and then we can all move on together as a town, whatever the people decide.
He's responding to Patrick. So Patrick, before the election last year, I asked you to go have a cup of coffee with me and talk, correct? I went to a place down near, near you on the north end of town. And at that time, I asked you to please consider to put this item on, the agenda item on, to have a vote on this, the exact same thing that you just said, to vote. And we discussed it, and you told me your thoughts, and how strongly you felt that this was a good deal, that this was a good deal, you felt so much, that you didn't, you didn't want to put back on the ballot to put them for the vote, because it was a good deal. So, Patrick, so you did vote for it, and during?
Excuse me, excuse me.
So you did vote, it was a 3-2 vote, and I did not vote for it. I didn't vote for it then, because I didn't believe it was a good deal then. Since then, I've had the opportunity to be bond counsel, to be the goalless, to find out misconceptions that have been out there, and I think it's even the worst of a deal now. So Patrick, I would not vote for this, I am not going to vote for this this evening to have a referendum, because it's even a worse deal now, now that I have facts that we didn't know before. So my answer is no on this.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, the new facts are that we have a, you know, a business in place that's paying for camp charges, we're netting, we're not netting, but we have an extra 22,000 a year that can go towards the maintenance of the IGA Belmont space. I mean, you know, and the thing is, I didn't want to put it on the ballot back in, when we had coffee, because we didn't have 160 people at the meeting objecting to the sale of the building, you know, I mean, there's people. I believe there's a lot of people who are disenfranchised, because you guys, they voted for the bond, and you guys are just, are just going to kill this date on three votes, and basically, you know, Jill, you won by 87 votes, and I think, you know.
Doesn't matter.
Well, the thing is.
Doesn't matter, there was the vote margin, I kind of remember that, the vote margin's small.
I let him finish, and then Jill's going to go.
Your side's argument is on the bond vote, that people didn't understand what they're voting for, okay? I think if we took an independent poll today, I think people had more bias for votes over the results of the 2018 town council election.
You know, I was just going to say, the continued argument about the votes, the votes in this election were really, really close. You know, Jesse, you did, you got the top votes, you knocked on all the doors, good for you, I mean, I really.
That's always the why, because I knocked on the doors.
Jesse, I'll just say, good for you, I'll give you a compliment, take a compliment, right? You knocked on all the doors, you did a great job, you got the most votes. But, but Patrick, you got 123 votes less than Jesse. Matt, 332, 330. Rick, 548, myself, 603. There weren't a tremendous amount of votes separating us. You know, Ricky beat me by 55 votes. So to continue to hear about the fact I won by 87, to me is, I think you're trying to really hit into a battle of the person who came in behind me, and try to, and try to reiterate what happened in our last term. Let's get past that. I mean, we won, the people who won, won, we have to deal with that.
So you don't disenfranchise the whole population?
It's not disenfranchised. You act like there was no 2018 election.
This will solve the issue.
There was an election, and elections have officials to actually cast votes and make decisions. You might not like the decision, Patrick, I've been there, I've been on your side last term.
There was a major hiccup in one of the candidates' campaigns, and then now we've got to live with the results, so that's what happened, so, you know.
Also, when 67% of the town votes for something, and you drop, drop it, and don't follow through, that's the definition of disenfranchisement? It is, that's the word?
Well, the part that you're leaving out completely, Jesse, is the fact is that, is that we discussed tonight that Matt has a proposal for an RFP that's going to go on for existing site. So again, the vote was either to renovate or to purchase, and so renovate.
No, it wasn't. You're just, acquisition of real estate, it's not to renovate, and the bond council told us that, Jesse.
Renovate and purchase and renovate was the language.
Correct, purchase and renovate.
So there's not clear, Jesse?
Are we purchasing, however? It is clear, it's very clear.
Jesse, I'm, I'm not, it's.
You guys, yeah, can't read, you guys.
That's fine.
No, people.
Yes.
Okay, Jesse, good. Go ahead, go ahead, yeah, come on up.
First of all, does anyone realize how long, how much more it's going to cost the longer this goes on? Eventually, this library is going to be built, but the cost is going to rise, because construction costs always go up. So thank you for taking so much time. I want to thank you, Mr. President, for educating us so, but I'm sure none of us, none of us could possibly understand what a democracy is, and you are teaching us a new, a new meaning of democracy. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, Dr. Al Albo, 24 Eagles, N S Terrace. My dad, Albert Alba Senior, has a long and storied history of speaking at the Narragansett Town meetings, but bringing forth ideas that were best for his beloved Narragansett. His love for our town is what inspired me to get involved in an issue that my dad has always valued. Before all council members made their decision regarding a motion for residents to re-vote on the library, I have some points I would like you all to strongly consider. If the cost for the re-vote is approximately $15,000, that is a small price to pay, because if we fail to proceed, we will lose several million dollars of bond money, which was approved by nearly 68% of the voters in Narragansett. In addition, all the money from all this reimbursement will be lost. To be physically smart, we'll set now to take advantage of the available funding. If the motion for a new referendum fails tonight, the future cost to build the state of the Yank library will go up greatly due to inflation in the future. Allowing a new vote this spring will enable the town to resolve the concerns of some voters who may have been unsure as to the location of the new library when they voted back in 2016. A new vote this spring will provide clarity for those council members who have reservations on proceeding and who voted to sell the town-owned property at Belmont location. If the town council votes against allowing the people to take a fresh look without just calls, it is an infringement on the foundations of democracy, as the vote for the approval of the bond for the library was clearly approved by the majority of voters. We were involved in a revolutionary war as a result of taxation with our representation. Our country was founded upon a set of beliefs that allowed for a representative form of government with direct citizen participation. Please honor that, and let us take another vote. Please, please, not let anyone else take on this 19, Narragansett, a lot of South Indian citizens to be tasked with our representation. People may take a second look at making Narragansett their own, and some may even send a movie out in Narragansett as an unintended consequence of elected officials not upholding the will of the voters. Please don't let this happen. I urge you, I strongly urge you, please approve this opportunity for a re-vote, so all Narragansett residents, including the much-discussed side of the majority, can all be heard. In conclusion, I would ask you to take the Belmont building off the market until the result of the upcoming election. As a democracy, we need to have a clear picture, so that the residents' votes will be heard in Narragansett on this important issue. Thank you very much.
My name's 30, 31, I'm from New York. Quarter initiatives, I withdrew those and I filed new ones with this in mind, Patrick's motion to have an election. It would be the least expensive way. You think that you've got the sound majority out there, a lot of people think they have the majority. The easiest way to do this is through this election, a special election, because my initiatives are not going away. They're going to stay there, go all the way to 2020, it just might not go all the way to 2020 unless we have this special election. Now, it costs a day, how much, Patrick, why are we delaying?
$350 a day.
$350 a day to delay this. So if you're interested in saving this town money, if you're interested in moving this town forward, you will have this election, and you will abide by the results. Thank you.
She's been waiting for a second.
Vicki Crimmy Shield, South Trier. I'm just talking in regards to, when you were talking about when we elected you as officials and you're voting in our behalf, and so you guys are taking this as a mandate against the library, it sounds to me. So there's only been one person on this council who has made clear that they were against the library, and that's President Evans. You guys both ran to move the library forward, so how are the voters to know when they're voting that you were going to be against the library? So when you use that as a mandate against the library, it doesn't make sense, because you guys ran for the library, we just heard that discussion today. So this mandate that we keep talking about, and that we elected you as officials, and all these vote counting, and everything that we're talking about, it has no validity, because when we voted at the polls, I've heard, I've heard Ricky Lehman say many times he was for the library. So how are voters supposed to know, when they go and make that vote, that you guys are against it? It makes no sense, you can't use that argument. Thank you.
I think we could take this $15,000 and hire one hell of a mediator. This, I guarantee you, will solve our problem and end this animosity, but I'm against spending $15,000 for this, but give me a mediator, and this will work.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from the council? All in favor?
One more.
All in favor? All in favor? Go ahead, go ahead, Mary.
Thank you, Council President. I didn't plan to speak this evening, not that I'm coward after two weeks ago, I assure you, you know that, but I have to address what we all witnessed just now. There's a new word in the American lexicon since 2016, and we just saw a marvelous example of it, a very instructive, teachable moment for us all. It's called gaslighting, and that's what Council Lawler just did to Councilwoman Murray, and I will not let her stand. She knows, she claimed she had a cup of coffee with him prior to the election to assist, to get his assistance to have a re-vote on the library, when she knows those ballots were probably printed when she had a cup of coffee with him, so that there was no opportunity to have a re-vote. And Councilwoman Lawler, did you lift one finger administratively to have that happen? Did you even make a motion? Did you put an agenda item on? Did you do anything? Did you consult with the town clerk? Did you consult with the town solicitor? Did you consult with the town manager? What did you do? We have no evidence of it, and that's what gaslighting looks like. You made a statement, and we have no proof of it. You repeatedly said that people did not know for what they were voting, but you never lifted a finger, we have no evidence that you lifted a finger to have that put back on the ballot. We have no evidence that you lifted a finger to have that put back on the ballot. And that's why Mr. Lima was so confused tonight. He said, "Oh, wasn't this discussed, wasn't this talked about?" No, Mr. Lima, it wasn't. It was mentioned over and over again, but there was no action taken. Nothing. Nothing concrete, except showing up in a photograph with Mr. Gilbain the day the building was acquired, and then gaslight us again and tell us that you did that in your capacity as an elected official because you felt it was incumbent upon you to do that. Therefore, every time, Ms. Lawler, when we see you around town, we don't know if you're acting out of genuine sincerity or authenticity. We can just assume you're there because you're an elected official. This is disgraceful.
Trudy Ball, fifteen, Harbor Island Road. I'm a new resident here, I've lived here for two and a half years, and I love the community and I'm really impressed with the people that I've met, and it's a very vibrant place. And I'm just surprised and sort of sad that you wouldn't see the vision of a place in the community that could be the center for the library and for other related activities, but that you have an opportunity to create something that's cutting-edge, state-of-the-art, and to be proud of. And I just, I don't know why this, that wouldn't be an opportunity that you would want to jump at to expand the vibrant community that already exists here. And in terms of the election, I just wonder why you would not be in favor. What have you got to lose? You could, if the voters wouldn't speak, and so why wouldn't you agree to it? That's, that's what I asked.
All right. And some of you know and may not know, I'm a Trump supporter. I know, I know, I know. It was smelling smells from the back room. I know you three are Trump supporters. And Trump would support this library. Trump would be eight round, he would build the library a conference, a library, okay? And then it'd try to get South Kingston to pay for it.
Anything else?
That's it.
All in favor?
All in.
All opposed?
No.
No, motion fails, two to three. Item number seven. Last item is open for public comment, so this is a period where people from the community have an opportunity to share views on topics that are going on in the town, and just ask people to be respectful and adhere to the timelines. All right. Yes, miss?
Good evening. I was asked by a resident who...
Could you say your name and address, please?
I, if I could just say this first.
No, we need your name and address at the beginning.
I'm actually doing this for somebody else and then for me. Okay? Because somebody couldn't be here because she can't, oh, let me just explain. So I was asked by Sue M. Russo of One Eleven West Bay Drive to make the following statement. I sincerely hope that my voice is heard tonight. My comments concern my desire to restore the open forum to the start of town council meetings. On February fourth, I attended the town council meeting and was unable to speak on this issue because the person I brought to the meeting needed to leave for health reasons. Tonight, I am caring for my grandchildren during school vacation, and they are too young to stay up since the open forum is still at the end of the meeting. Thus, once again, I am unable to speak. If the forum was at the start, I could bring my grandchildren to the meeting where they would witness democracy in action, including their grandmother speaking in public. They would seek concerned residents and voters, speaking up about issues that face their town and trying to make a better community. Hopefully, this includes a town council that is receptive to these comments and is not operating with a closed mindset. Restore the open forum to the start of the meeting. My name is Deborah Kopeck, nine sixty-three Point Judith Road. I echo Sue's comments, as location of open forum was one of the four issues I wanted to bring up. But Sue has done that for me. As you can see, it's late, it's twenty-five minutes to ten, and the place is sort of empty now. I think it would be helpful if we restored open forum to its rightful time. Next, I'd like to learn what the outcome of the solarized Narragansett project was. I've had solar panels on my roof for two and a half years. Essentially, my entire cost for electricity is covered by what National Grid pays me for the energy my panels produce. In this era of overuse and waste of natural resources, I would like to know what the town council is planning with regard to the use of renewable energy, I did hear a little bit about that tonight, to reduce the cost of electricity in town, on buildings, and especially what the short and long-term plan for coastal management is. I'd like to know the position of each town council member with regard to offshore wind and offshore drilling. These issues require solutions now, not in the future, but now. And I will say, in reference to a previous comment earlier this evening, that one of the areas that I know Jesse Pugh is really interested in besides the library is environmental issues. In the same vein, I would like to know what has become of the initiative introduced to this council last year to ban single-use plastic bags of retail businesses in Narragansett. Plastic bags are a serious danger to wildlife, particularly to ocean-dwelling fish and mammals. This issue is a crisis, and for community seclusion at seashore and salt ponds, it is unconscionable not to have already imposed the ban. If you cannot answer these questions this evening, I'd really appreciate an answer at the next town council meeting. Finally, I want to express my absolute support for the library plan using the vacant building in the pier. I'm not really sure about the idea of having the election, but I know that that's an opportunity to reach across the aisle, if you will, to do something, to get a solution. I also want to say that Meg talked about gaslighting, and another area of gaslighting is the use of the phrase silent majority. I don't think there is a silent majority, and frankly, I continue to wonder where the people who do not support the plan are. Because those who do support it come here regularly. I've been here, meeting after meeting, and so have so many other people. Some staying out later than they want to to make sure their voices are heard. Surely, if more than four people are in opposition to the existing plan, they can show up and be heard too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Smith?
My name's David Smith. I live at twenty-four Castle Road in Narragansett. In this room, on Monday evening at five-thirty, there will be a public hearing before the Rhode Island Transportation, Rhode Island State Transportation Advisory Committee. The subject of the hearing will be an amendment to the State Transportation Improvement Plan, which will scoop twenty-seven million dollars out of transportation alternatives. Transportation alternatives includes bike paths, sidewalks, safe routes to school, and other improvements for pedestrians and cyclists, as well as some transit improvements. Specifically for the town of Narragansett, it will involve reduction of the amount of money allocated for completion of the South County Bike Path by seven million dollars. The money that will be, the resident, the remainder of that money will not be allocated until twenty-twenty-five. So ninety percent of the money that would be left over is going to be, is scheduled for twenty-twenty-five, which means it's never gonna happen. So this plan, a specific move within this twenty-seven million dollar reduction, is going to effectively kill the South County Bike Path completion period, not the year of the woods. There are other effects in it. With rating, green economy loan money that's parked in the Transportation Alternative Plan. So the hearing will be before the Transportation Advisory Committee on Monday evening at five-thirty here. There'll be a second meeting in Providence on Thursday. Starts at four o'clock in the Department of Administration. At that point, that will end the public comment period, and then the Transportation Advisory Committee will vote on whether or not to recommend passage of this amendment. I really hope that you would attend that hearing, and I'm very glad that there are so many people left here tonight to get the message to. So again, please attend to this issue, and thank you for your support. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing that up for us and for everyone at home. Again, that is Monday here in the town hall. So thank you for that. Ms. Stewart?
Thank you. Good evening, Carol Stewart, Eastwood Look. I was watching on television, and I raced down here at this hour. And I respect every one of you for the fact that you took the time to run. I hope that all of you would equally respect your constituents who sit here, come to the meeting for whatever they can at whatever time they can, and that derogatory remarks are not made towards the people who do take the effort to be concerned about town government and come out and speak. Each speaker should be respectful of each one of you, and each one of you, in turn, should be respectful of those of us who have an interest in the town and have voted for all of you. I am discouraged by the time change for the open forum. If it was a nice summer evening, maybe I wouldn't feel too badly. I'm not too pleased to have to get into my car tonight at quarter after nine. But I want to bring up the fact that in addition to the chaos surrounding the topic of the library, there are other issues in town that have to be addressed. And since the election, the concentration unnecessarily at times has been evolving about the library. Library is critical, I spend a lot of time there, I appreciate that. And, but what I want to mention is some of the other issues. Our neighborhoods are continuing to disintegrate. Every sale in our neighborhood is an investment. People paying six hundred thousand dollars so they can convert the house for rental. And the few of us left have to keep our eye on the aging neighbors. I found one half-laying in his driveway when I took a walk a couple of evenings ago, and it was just getting dark. And I had to help him up, stay with him. He's a widow, a veteran. And let's say eventually, we call the rescue and the police, and he's been taken care of, and two more incidents have happened because we do not have a neighborhood anymore, you understand? We don't have a neighborhood. These people don't have neighbors. Another gentleman in his eighties, a woman whose younger son lives with her, was walking his dog and noticed the mail had not been collected. He went, that man's in a nursing home. Another man was found in, a veteran who used to come here and cry about his situation of what he had to deal with, living in our neighborhood, and begged for something. Anyway, he's a diabetic fellow. His family found him, fortunately. I was taking a walk and talked to the daughter and the son. We don't have a neighborhood anymore. It's very discouraging. And so what can the town do about that? You know that you can do about it, and I'm not just talking about no more than four and all that, I'm talking about zoning, single-family homes, homes that are designated multifamily. They're not multifamily, they have ten bedrooms, they're a dormitory. You have to have better control over what is happening in our town. If you want families to move in, you mentioned all younger families who are moving. Can they pay six hundred thousand dollars for a three-bedroom house? No. It has to be affordable. We have many other important issues, and if you don't start agreeing and move forward on important things so that we, once again, can have students in our schools, we can have young families, young professionals, singles, moving in and feeling comfortable and wanting to come here, they can't afford it. You have to make over a hundred thousand dollars in order to be able to afford a mortgage in our town. And those are statistics from statewide plan, unless you're buying it as an investor. Airbnbs are now popping up in our neighborhood. They're not even registered. Do we know how many rentals and airbnbs we have in our neighborhoods now? This is the reality, and that will let me vent. And the other thing I do not appreciate is when people demean some of us who have been coming here for eighteen years, and they say, "Oh, there's an elderly group in town who hates the students." "Oh, there's an elderly group in town who are trying to change our laws." Yeah, well, too bad.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, thank you.
I don't think government should tell who can or cannot buy a house in Narragansett. It's a, for government to control purchases of houses, crazy. But let me, the reason I want to stand here, I guess the Narragansett tax rate, nine point nine-five per thousand. Not bad. North Kingston, I looked up, eighteen dollars and fifty-nine cents in North Kingston. That's kind of almost double. And so then I drove by a library, and I guess it brought up the idea that maybe people in charge were not spending enough time paying attention to money. Because obviously, I meant that a library is a beauty, it's a Mr. Man, it's a, it's a mansion activity. It's a beautiful place, you go in there, you look out, water, water, beautiful. In fact, I stayed, I stayed there and I, I just looked out the window for half an hour. It was so nice, it was beautiful. And I'm sure they paid a lot of money for this mansion, and there was four cars in the parking lot. Pretty, pretty disheartening to see almost nobody there. I guess it was like three o'clock in the afternoon. So I don't know what size and where we should have a library, but we have to be very cost-conscious on what we do, on the details of what we're gonna do for our library. And I, I'm hoping that I hit, we got the road thing going on, that seventeen million dollar bond mortgage thing. So already, I don't think that's hit full force on our tax bill yet. So that, that's coming along. And I don't know how the other things, but I want to maintain a fruitful schedule on every project. And that's, and that starts with the library. It's a shame that we didn't have two or three or four prices to start with, so we could have had two or three or four alternative before the whole thing. You know, I didn't hear all, I guess. You know, I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't pay attention enough. I wish I were, you know, during the discussion, not only voting, but also have prices available on different ideas. Like, you know, I guess they, they thought they did a good job vetting all the alternatives and it'd be nice, I guess, to see the details on some of the lower-cost approaches that we could have done, maybe. But I just, I want to, again, from a taxpayer's point of view, I want to bring it up because you don't hear it too often, I guess. They pay, they pay twice as much as we. North Kingston, double the taxes. Are we on that track? Are we gonna go there? I want you to consider that. I don't want to pay twice as much taxation here, and I want my children to pay that either. So maintain your vigilance on our money.
Thank you. Yes, that is... Yes, Patty?
Stanley, I live in North Kingston. Anyway, I just wanted to take this opportunity. Last time I spoke with some statistics, that a lot of people were surprised at some of the numbers. And in last week's paper, it was stated that 10,000 people per month use of our library seems grossly inflated, so I felt like I needed to answer that. So July 2018, we had 13,918. August, 12,653. September, 10,779. October, 11,929. November, 9,405. December, 9,500. And in this January, we had 10,998. So we do have an average of 10,000 a month. And the other thing is the online access, which includes, I would imagine, eBooks, which they access through our website, and they also, we have a wireless system that counts how many people use that. So between those two items, we have 19,000 users for that. So I just wanted to let you know that we do have that kind of traffic coming in and out the whole library. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Lori?
Lori Kelly, Wildfield Farm Road. I want to go back to speak to the earlier motion that Jill had on, because I was not recognized to speak on that. So I want to go down the sort of the road that Jesse also brought up, that established that in the charter, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, it gives certain rights to the library and the library board of trustees. And 42-1 says, "Such library may include facilities and branches throughout the town as determined by the board of trustees." And I think that this is very important for a lot of reasons. You cannot remove programs from the library because you think that they should be in a different venue. And to the solicitor's point, you can have movies on the beach, you can have movies in the elementary school. They will not be a library program. And the shortage of physical space is not children's bathrooms solely. There is an entire consultant's report that addresses all the reasons that the current library in Narragansett is in waivers with the state. We do not meet many different requirements for the state, and we have filed waivers for three years. It seems like the library in Narragansett does a fantastic job, and the people that go there are unaware that we are, you know, operating in such dire circumstances. And then you have letter writers who say, "Oh, these numbers are grossly overstated." Well, it's clear these people are not coming to the library to see what the situation is there. As far as the new, you know, it's unfortunate that we can't revoke this, we can't move forward, we're being stymied, but I want to go over again for the people that are concerned about costs, and to Stanley to say, "I wish we had, we looked at all the options." We did look at all the options. This was actually the lowest-cost option. And if you look at, whoever was talking about Jamestown's program right now, they're going to spend $2 million to put 1,900 square feet on their 11,000-square-foot library. So let's think about this. Jamestown is a town of 5,000 people, and yet their library is bigger than our current library. So you can see that the small-town library that council members talk about, you need to pay attention to the state mandates of physical space and programming as required by the state. The oldest head was here on the January 14 workshop, and again, we were able to ask any questions. She said she has looked at this project and would expect the town to receive between 40% and 43% on this Belmont project. So $5.8 million bond, that's the most the town's on the hook for. $2.3 million would be the oldest conservative, you know, repayment, if you take the 40%, that's 2.3. That's 3.5 million to build a state-of-the-art library. I do not understand how you can say there's a cost problem. Those are the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? I'd see none. Is there motion to return?